Good evening. I call this September 14th, 2021 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville website. On September 17th, a video of this meeting will be updated to, uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Tonight's meeting includes one public hearing. In-person public comment will be allowed for tonight's meeting. Public address and public hearing comments were also accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. If time remains after in-person public speakers, comments received from interested parties that include a full name and address will be read verbatim during the public hearing for up to three minutes each, for a total of 30 minutes. Town Council may choose to suspend some or all of these rules if so desired. Sergeant Chad Pedlund has been a law enforcement officer for 21 years, is in current, and is currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. We appreciate him being here tonight as our sergeant-at-arms. Indication tonight will be delivered by Councilmember Robati.
Let us take a moment of silence to reflect on our purpose here, on what we seek to accomplish and how we will achieve it, on how we related today to our colleagues, families, and friends, on how we approach those with whom we disagree, on how we extended compassion and to whom, and on how, with the dawning of a new day, we can use tomorrow to spread kindness, peace, and hope. Thank you.
Thank you. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have anything they want to share at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, 7-0. There are four items on this evening's consent agenda: Capitol Project ordinance amendments for the Shiloh Sewer Fund and establishing a land acquisition fund, a resolution authorizing the Seventh Amendment to the Town Manager's employment agreement, and a resolution supporting the approval of the Memorandum of Agreement, MOA, between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid legislation, litigation. My apologies. Is there a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda? If no one has anything to pull?
I'll make that motion.
You want to pull something, or you want to make the motion? I'm sorry, I was...
No, I'm sorry. I would like to make an emotion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. I have a motion. Sorry, I didn't ask that the greatest way.
I'll second her motion.
Second from Councilmember Skrogus-Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes unanimously, 7-0. We're now at item eight, administrative reports. There are two administrative reports tonight: an intersection improvement study report and the 2020 fire department gap report. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Do any council members have any questions about these items? I do have a question about these items a little bit. There's 10 items on there, and I think that there's four of them in particular that I think would be really important for us to make sure that we address as quickly as possible. So I was wondering if staff can explain a little bit about where we are, what the plan forward is? Because I know one of the sentences says that we can get all these designs started sooner in FY '22. So if you can just walk me through that a little bit.
Could we get the page to advance to the spot?
Yeah, if we could have that up on the screen, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mark Spanioli, town engineer. You have before you the administrative report for the intersection improvement study that was performed by a consulting team that we engaged to help us with the process. In general, the study took 10 intersections that were provided to the consultant and developed intersection improvement projects. Some of them were new traffic signals. A couple of them were roundabouts. And some of them were pedestrian improvements and different things like that, turn lanes, et cetera. We then took the report and dissected it a little bit, and we provided some recommendations on the last page of the administration report. We broke it up into three categories: your pedestrian improvements, what we consider your priority need improvements, and then your future need improvements. The way we're looking at it right now is the pedestrian projects can be, two of the three of them, the Church Street project, could be implemented as part of our work that we're going to be doing shortly with our Church Street sidewalk project. So that's something we can incorporate with the design of that, and that should be starting this fiscal year, once we enter into the agreement with DOT. The third one, we can try to program this year or next fiscal year. It's improvements on Morrisville Parkway at Crabtree Crossing. Those are strictly pedestrian improvements and a signal adjustment to that intersection.
Sorry to interrupt, but is it possible to just make that signal adjustment just by turning a switch? Or is it a lot more complicated than that? Do we have to do all the 55,000 of pedestrian improvements in order to just make the signal a little better?
Well, you could make some of the improvements to the signal. It's not just flip a switch. There's a little more programming that needs to be done. And it makes sense to do it in conjunction with the high emphasis cross crossings for the pedestrian safety. And then the other priority need, intersection improvements, what we were thinking the best thing to do is create like a prioritization matrix so that we can bring them back for next year's budget and get them prepared to go into the design phase. And at the same time, start looking at how we can go after other grant opportunities to help fund these projects. As you know, we also have the bond coming shortly if that passes. So some of these projects could also be part of that bond referendum dollars for streets and sidewalks.
Okay, and those bond monies are FY '25, though, and FY '26?
FY '26, if I remember correctly. Yes, FY '26.
So I think that our residents are very interested in some of these projects, especially taking a right turn onto Davis Drive from Morrisville Parkway. So if there's any way to consider bringing back that prioritization matrix sooner, before we're discussing budget, I think this council would enjoy the opportunity to have choices.
Absolutely. I think we can accomplish that.
Okay, wonderful. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Skrogus-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Thank you. I really do appreciate the study of these very important intersections and potential improvements in the town because we all have our bias because of where we live or where we travel through the town. And to have an objective opinion is very helpful. One thing that is not really apparent is how much money we will potentially have for these improvements if the bond passes on the roads because there's competing projects, of course. And then also looking at the alignment of with Morrisville Carpenter Road coming back online, how that new traffic pattern will be affected. And that would also affect our prioritization based on how we're seeing the cars travel. So although I agree with the mayor, I'd like to look at that prioritization matrix earlier. I'm a little hesitant because of the Morrisville Carpenter Road unknown factor and seeing how that, the closure of the ride-in, ride-outs on certain openings to the road, how that affects our overall traffic pattern. And that might influence the prioritization even more, so.
Understood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So Mark, can you tell us how are we going to share this with the public? Because I want to make sure the public is, and they are aware now because it's a part of the agenda item and it's out there for public viewing. But some of these changes to these intersections are significant. And the one I'm, you know, and significant means different things to different people. And like Councilmember Skrogus-Johnson just said, it depends on where you live, and then it becomes even more significant. But the, you know, the Morrisville Parkway changes, and especially the Morrisville Parkway and Black Ridge Street. I want to make sure that the public has the ability to see this and at least give their thoughts, give their feedback, and weigh in a little bit before we kind of run down the road of designing and moving forward. So how are we going to build that into this process?
Well, we've done a little bit up to now. In fact, the study did include the public participation part of it. We certainly would happily publish the entire report on our website for anybody to look at. This is kind of a really very brief summary. It's an over 100-page report. And I think as we move along into each project, we certainly would like to gather more public input before we get deep into design, you're right. So it would be very similar to all of our products. Whenever we're doing a new change, a new traffic signal, the changes like you mentioned, the roundabouts pretty severe to some people, we would certainly want to garner all that public input before we get full into design at that point.
Okay, so that, okay, okay, that's good. So we'll look forward to hearing that and seeing that coming down the road.
Yeah, I think our first step is definitely the prioritization and putting all that together and bringing that forward to the council for review. And then we'll move step by step through there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Fender, then Robati.
Yeah. Mark? My question is more about absolutely the prioritization, but also the question, we are having a transportation bond out of which, how much money more for Martha? This question is like, are we allocating for these projects? You know, like some of like, say, $3 million or so at least as a bulk? And then the prioritization will come based on it, then eat up those costs. So do we know? Because I've not seen other than 7.5 million or something for the total transportation improvements, but the splits of, you know, what it is and how we plan to utilize after the bond has passed.
So Councilmember Garamella's raised a good point. As you've approved your bond categories, you've provided examples of projects, and you've split money out into various bond issuance years. For that particular category, we focused on Airport Boulevard sidewalk projects and then these other transportation improvements where these intersection projects come. As council decides what their highest priorities are, it could be some give and take between your highest priority sidewalk projects and some of these intersections as they would be designed and ready to go. You've received a whole bunch of information about sidewalks. This is a complimentary report competing for all those same resources.
Yeah, but like from the resource point of view, is it like 3 million, 4 million that we know? Or is it movable? Like, you know, because I don't want to give an expectation, like with all these projects, that the bond is going to pass and we'll get everything done. So that...
That's also accurate. You are receiving far more needs than the bonds are going to cover. That is accurate. So then it comes down to council will ultimately have to prioritize between all of those things.
And the second question is, this is more about the improvement, intersection improvement study. Has there been a study done regarding some orphan road sections which are like, for example, I'll say you go on Macraman coming from Davis Drive towards Chapel in F54. When you pass, get past the church, you know, suddenly it becomes one lane and then it becomes two lanes. So you're pretty much crumbling the entire traffic going into one. But that particular area, less than 50, you know, 50 yards or something, is a bottleneck. And the other one going eastwards on from Perimeter and Macraman, they have a strip which is completely stripped with yellow, you know? And then I think it's a residual of that, like a roundabout which was done. So those things, you know, like I'm looking for areas around where the high traffic is just forced to go into single lane and then again go back. So if we have certain potentials that we could address to make those two lane so that, you know, the traffic can be flushed out much quicker.
Councilmember, I don't, I'm not familiar with a specific study that we may have done pertaining to that, but I am aware that the DOT has an inventory of all those locations. They're all pretty much on state roads. Some of them are being addressed over long-term projects.
Yeah, but those are getting pushed too, right? Like the Macraman has pushed by, you know, like almost four, five years or six, seven years. So like, but we are doing it, but that is hurting us because we're getting into a bottleneck situation there, like certain areas. So if we can at least make up a list and then see what we can do to help that, or at least push it. Yeah, that's all for now. But a good list.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you. I had a question on what was the criteria that was used to determine which projects fall under the priority need and then the two projects that fall under the future need? Because I've been hearing a lot about the issue with the intersection Downey-Glynn Drive with Town Hall Drive for a while. So I would think that would be a fairly high priority. Granted, it has a higher price tag, but I'm just curious how it was determined to fall to the third list.
I was asking the town clerk to put that chart up so people can see exactly what she's talking about down at the bottom. Yep, thank you. That's it. Enlarge a little bit.
Yes.
Enlarge. Is that good? Yeah, I think so.
So to answer your question, without doing, without having an opportunity to do our full prioritization matrix, what I did was just break them out by level of service today. So the ones that are in the priority need category had a failing level of service. And so we figured those were the ones that maybe were prioritized as a priority need now. The future need ones did not have a failing level of service yet. Some of them had a failing level of service by year 2041, but currently they did not.
So what does that mean, failure level of service?
So in the traffic world, data is collected for volume of vehicles. And based on the volume and the amount of lanes that you have and the capacity for each lane, it's put in, so it's almost like your grades in school, you get A through F. So all of the ones in the priority needs category today are basically failing. They're overcapacity. So the road is overcapacity, whether it be some of the turn lanes overcapacity, the intersection itself is overcapacity, the amount of vehicles crossing through the intersection. So that's how that was determined.
Does safety, is safety incorporated in that determination?
Not for level of service. And that's why I put in here that I thought it was important for us to give us a chance to do a little more prioritization, to see which ones move up or move down from there. So for example, like in the priority needs category, none of those are prioritized. They're just put in, in the order they were just written, so.
But it sounds like the priority matrix we're going to be given won't even include those last two projects, or will it?
No, we're going to prioritize the entire package.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Robati, please, followed by Councilmember Rao.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think that for purposes of the public, I think it would be advantageous to, when you produce the final report and the prioritization matrix, to include some context around, like for example, at the Church Street at Jeremiah, Church Street at Jeremiah Street, construct a new roundabout and install sidewalks. Why is a roundabout the best choice for that area? I mean, because...
We can do that.
Yeah. I think that that helps people, I think, to understand exactly what the thought process was.
That makes sense.
You can agree or disagree with it, but if we say that we're plunking down another roundabout, you know, I, I mean, I think that people are going to want to know why we need one.
We can certainly do that. I mean, the full report has that, all that data.
The full report's 100 pages.
No, I know. And we can certainly, no, I agree.
I'm not offering to read that. But I mean, I will, but I don't think the public will.
Understand.
If I was. So yeah, I think that some context around the decisions that are being made, you know, even like taking a step back and the decisions being made to, to Councilmember Fender's point as to why this is a priority project and what makes this the best option for that project would be, I think would be helpful.
That sounds great.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Mark. Some of my questions have already been answered, but I did have a question about the data, you know, vehicle data, crash data at these different intersections. Is that data that we'll be able to put eventually on our open data portal so citizens can, you know, access and compare crash data and things like that? And if you've already addressed that, I apologize, but I couldn't...
No, I didn't address that. And yeah, we can do that. In fact, some of the data already is available on the internet through the DOT's portal. But we can certainly put all that out there for the public to see. That's no problem.
And for example, like one intersection that Councilmember Garamella has mentioned this over the years is the intersection turning off of Davis Drive away from Grace Park, where there's the flashing yellow light. There's been a lot of accidents there. My son just got his learner's permit, and I'm just so scared of these young drivers taking a left, even any of us, where there's a blind spot sometimes. You can't see. And so those are the kinds of things, just data that's comparing the intersections, you know, looking at the frequency of crashes and those kinds of things. So whatever we can do to make that happen would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't see anything else. So thank you very much for bringing this report forward. We look forward to staff bringing back the prioritized list with the context as noted. And then we'll have another step in our process. So thank you very much. We look forward to it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next item. Presentations. So I have the pleasure of reading our one proclamation, presentation tonight. It's a proclamation recognizing National Preparedness Month, after which I will bring up certain members in attendance to receive the proclamation and have Board Member Dick Fane share a few thoughts. This is a proclamation recognizing September as National Preparedness Month, whereas the Town of Morrisville promotes family and community disaster planning now and throughout the year, and whereas community members should talk to friends and family about how you will communicate before, during, and after a disaster, and whereas community members should gather supplies that will last for several days after a disaster for everyone living in their home, and whereas residents should learn about the risk of disasters most likely to affect them and check their insurance cover, coverage, talk to your children about preparing for emergencies and what to do in case you get separated, and whereas Morrisville businesses should prepare their employees, develop a business continuity plan, and engage in community-level planning to help ensure our communities and private sector remain strong when faced with an emergency. And whereas Morrisville residents should remember, disasters don't wait. Make your plan today. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the month of September 21, National Preparedness Month throughout the Town of Morrisville, and asks all residents of Morrisville to create a disaster preparedness plan for their home or business continuity plan for their business, and to participate in a disaster preparedness programs such as the Town of Morrisville Community Emergency Response Team. So thank you. As a member of CERT myself, I'm very proud to be part of this team. And each member gets a great sense of camaraderie and purpose and continual training. A couple of weeks ago, Officer Morris was kind enough to refresh our traffic training. So that was very fun. I would like to share that we have our monthly, next monthly meeting tomorrow night at Fire Station 1 Training Room. It's right next door, begins at 6:30. And all are welcome to join and see what we're all about. So if the members, Dick Fane and the other members of CERT, would please come to the front, I'd like to present you with the proclamation.
I'm going to give you the next one in a couple of minutes. We're just going to... Thank you. Yeah, I'd just like to say on behalf of the board, our CERT board, and all of our members, we'd like to say thank you to the city council and their support, especially the support and training we get from the department, our chief, the police department, and the police chief, and all of the volunteers. And we're all volunteers. Enjoy this camaraderie, and we look forward to working every month on training. And hopefully, we won't have to be pulled out. But there should be someone in your community that will be there to help you. Thank you.
Stepford Eads up here, and Craig Johnson. You might know him, that's our councilman, Skrogus-Johnson. Can you tell us what neighborhood you're from, or should I help us spread out?
Yes, from the Savannah neighborhood.
That's great. And he actually lives in here. He's on our board. And I'm impressed with that. So we have a lot of people in town who grow up town. When there's an emergency, we're here to help. So thank you all very much for being here, and happy National Preparedness Month.
At this time, we are at item 10, public address. Town Clerk Smith, is there anyone here in person signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, there was one individual signed up for in-person comments. Mr. Jim Simmons.
Okay. If you could please approach the microphone. You'll have three minutes. If you could please state your name and address.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Little louder?
Try that. Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I'm Jim Simmons. Maybe not the newest resident, but pretty close. Having moved here a few weeks ago from the Mojave Desert in California. Morrisville has green, which is quite a surprise to us from the desert. We have only brown and sand colors. But it's very nice, and we've enjoyed being here. We're located across the street from the Morrisville Elementary School. And as a result, we get to watch the Morrisville Parkway every day and watch the traffic and the fire trucks and the kids going to school. It's quite an interesting education about the town. I met Mr. Rao and Ms. Johnson at the farmer's market the other day, and they said it might be okay if I came down and said hello and introduced myself. So I'm pleased to do that. We've noticed that Morrisville seems to be very well-planned. That's really nice to see, all the, the way the roads are made and the infrastructure. Someone's done a very good job at that. And the outlook seems good as well. So we've been very pleased by that. I did have a suggestion. We watch the traffic crossing guards at the school every day. And I lived most of my life on a military base. And the difference in safety when those guards wear white gloves is incredible. So I'm going to offer to pay for white gloves if the crossing guards will wear them because that enhances the visibility substantially. And there are a lot of people, there are a few people that drive too fast in that region. And we watched one night when there was an accident down the street a little bit, and the officer showed up to block the traffic. And somebody came approaching him so fast, he had to throw the cones in front of their car to stop him. And when he tried to chew them out, they got lippy with him. And I thought, oh, boy, we're watching the first arrest here in Morrisville. But fortunately, cooler heads prevailed. He did a very good job, and so we were pleased to see that. I do a lot of work as a consultant in crisis management. And I'm pleased that there's a CERT organization. They are really an excellent resource. And as a veteran of two substantial 7.0 earthquakes in the last couple of years in California, I can tell you that it's essential that you have groups like CERT to help out. We even had to evacuate our hospital. That's how bad it got. So I'm pleased that they're doing that and having this recognition this month. I would ask if it's possible to have the apartments complexes be mandated to have a recycling program. We enjoy going down here and recycling, but if we had a program, it'd be a lot better. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice to be here.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. And you have police officers here who heard you. So we appreciate input from everyone in our community. So keep those suggestions coming. Was there anyone else signed up to speak in person? Is there anyone in the room who failed to sign up who would like to speak for three minutes? Okay. I just want to confirm there were not any emailed public address comments? Okay. We will move on to number 11 then. There is one public hearing on the agenda tonight. Consideration of UDO text amendments related. And Chris Lawson, our planning manager, will present the item.
All right. Good evening, council. Okay, so tonight, we have four staff-proposed text amendments before you. I'll summarize the four briefly. The first one's to allow the submission of a development application on properties with a development moratorium due to clearing of trees. And basically, this one would allow a development application to be submitted but would not be allowed to be approved prior to the moratorium being removed. The second one was amending... The second one was amending parking standards for emergency uses. This would reduce the minimum number of required spaces. The third would amend the length of time for approval of a final decision made by Town Council, of an appeal of a final decision made by Town Council. And the last one would require new residential dwelling units to construct sidewalks, only if they are located on streets identified in the sidewalk development policy and project prioritization list. So let me jump right in. The first one deals with limitations on development proposals subsequent to exempt forestry activity. This is a, a general statute-required change to the UDO, and it was brought to our attention because a developer questioned whether the town could proceed in the manner which the UDO currently has outlined. So currently, if a property was forested, you know, in a manner allowed by the state, the town could place a hold on that property so that no developer could even submit a development application prior to a three- or five-year hold. We had recently, we recently learned that the town has to accept an application, but we have the authority still to prevent approval of that project for three to five years. So if a, if a site was, was forested, consistent with, with North County forestry law, the town could put a three-year hold on a property, we currently have a few mostly along the Crenshaw area. And then if, if the site was forested and then graded, we could place a five-year hold on any development on that property. And some of the logic behind this is allow trees the time to regrow, as well as, as just, you know, kind of incentivizing leaving the trees on the site. So again, this change would just make it so the town could accept an application for review, we still would not approve it. Basically, this, this would grant a developer that time, you know, the four to six months it takes to actually review a, a site plan. And I, I do want to be clear, i- if, if there's clearing of trees not related to forestry activity as outlined in the general statutes, the planning department still would cite the person who cleared the trees with some combination of fines and a requirement to replant those trees. And there's more specific details depending on the exact nature of the clearing. But, but this is required by state statute, it's more of a cleanup item, just to prevent a development application from being approved rather than being submitted. And so I'd like to take any questions on this one, I, I feel there probably will be some.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I don't actually get the point of this. Like, would a developer really submit a, a site plan to, for a project, for a piece of land that has a three-to-five-year hold on it?
So yes, and this came from some conversations just along the Crenshaw area with the rezonings that have recently happened, several properties have tree holds on them, and what this does, it would save them that review period, which takes generally three to six months. So if they, let's say, you know, let's say next month the tree hold would be removed, this would save them that four weeks of review time.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm on board, thank you, sorry.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, and you've explained this as we were going along, so.
Okay, we'll move on.
And just to note, a public hearing tonight on this item as well, so.
Yes, mhm.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
So the, the second text amendment here is discretionary. This came to my attention, or planning staff's attention, as the town has been developing sketch and concept plans for a, a fire station. Currently, a fire station or emergency service use of any kind will be required to have one parking space per 350 square feet of floor area, and it, town staff feel that that's, that's far too many parking spaces that are required. So, but, but the fire department as well as Capitol Project staff brought this to our attention, that we were requiring far too many, and as, as part of this, I put together this little chart, or it's graph, and I compared the Morrisville parking standards to many of our Western Wake County neighbors. As you can see, we currently would require for, for the proposed fire station, for, for the proposed Morrisville fire station, we would have currently required 43 parking spaces for a, a fire station of a similar size and use. You'll see below this, it ranges from 16 to 30 parking spaces, with most being in the teens. So what your planning staff is proposing is that we cut the number in half, so it goes from 350 down to 700. So 700 is what we would require in a Main Street area or the transit-oriented development district. And both Capitol Project and Fire Staff have, have confirmed, this is gonna be more of what the fire station requires rather than that 43 spaces. And they can, they can certainly still put more than 22, but that would be what the minimum is.
Ready for questions? Councilmember Garamella, please.
Chris, this is for the new fire station, I'm guessing, right? This is, so we have a lot of vacant land too, right? So I understand, like, increasing to 700, but I would highly encourage us to look more deeper and get more parking spots, like in a 2025 is a good parking spot if you had to put a complimentary park or something that can go, so at least it has the 20 parking lots that they can share between these two, that that would be a good use of it. I, I understand you're looking purely for the sake of emergency services, but we have four and a half acres or four acres, like, give and take, that is not going to be used right now, but if we create the capacity of the parking, then we don't have to reinvent the wheel for when we have that up and running.
Certainly.
Okay.
So, Chris, real quick, so Councilmember Garamella, I understand that I think if we had an opportunity to have some discussion about other uses on that property, that would make a lot of sense from, you know, economy scale, but at this point, we don't necessarily know what else would go on that property, there's a possibility we could use it or not, so I think until we know better what that use would be, it might be premature to try to expand the park right now.
Not expand, at least you space it out in such a way that it is expandable, you don't have to pave it, but don't cut the, you know, envelope to just 22, but if you have an opportunity, grade it so that in future that you could use it, and the cost of whatever is coming can come from the other one.
Yeah, we can sort of loop that through the site, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
I concur with that, the 22 is probably gonna be plenty over at the Wake Tech site, but at Harris Mill, since we're gonna be using some other stuff, I'd like to make sure that we are flexible going forward in that area, so that's good. But generally, I, I agree that wasted space is wasted space. Councilmember Fender.
I guess two things, if anything, I would like to see the parking spaces lower than any higher, but if we could keep it at what it is now, or for what you're suggesting, the 700, the one space per 700 square feet at 22, that's certainly better than the 43. And I would suggest, as Assistant Town Manager Zuduma was saying, we do not know how that other acreage will be used, it could very well be used as a dog park, we have no idea, you know, what the usage is, so to me, it doesn't make sense to do any site work or grading or put in additional parking spaces ahead of time. So that's my input.
Okay, great. Councilmember Scruggan Johnson, please.
Thank you. I know that we use Fire Station One as a community space, we have a large training room that also is shared with community organizations such as CERT, or some of our advisory board meetings, and they do require parking, but there's parking nearby, and, you know, it seems like there's not a lot of spaces at the station itself. Where the location of Fire Station Three is not walkable as much as Fire Station One, so I'm more in favor of the 22 spaces as a minimum, there might be a need for actually more if, if there is a shared space that the community could use to hold meetings and so forth like that. So I don't know if that was ever brought up in your discussion when you were considering aligning the parking to meet the needs of not just the fire station itself, but maybe some expanded community use. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nothing else on that amendment proposed, you can move on, Mr. Lawson, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're back to a, a cleanup item that is required by general statutes. This, this was just a change that was made that, that slipped through with some of the text amendments I made early in the summer, that an applicant has 60 days to actually file an appeal instead of 30 days as previously required or allowed. And then there are some small deviations for certain types of applications, and that's why I worded as appropriate per the general statutes. Just, that's the explanation, just a required change to allow appeals.
Okay, I think we understand that that's more of a cleanup item, I don't see any questions.
Okay, I'll move on. So this last proposed text amendment was actually, i- it's actually a tweak of an amendment council approved earlier this year, I think in July, as part of access and circulation. So the big change that was made in July was that previously, single-family homes that are not part of a subdivision, they're on an established lot that are built somewhere, just, just one house, did not have to construct a sidewalk in front of it if there was not currently a sidewalk. So the text amendments approved earlier in the summer then required every single new single-family home, every new single-family home to build a sidewalk. What has happened is, as staff has implemented this, is we've had homes that are built on roads that are older, that are, that are kind of off the major roads, and those homes have been required to build a sidewalk. So these are existing lots, existing subdivisions, I think some of your older roads in Morrisville such as Fairview Avenue, Green Drive, Clements, places like that. And really, we've had folks come in to build just one home, and they, they say to us, why, why do I have to build a sidewalk? I'm the only one back here, it's more of a tripping hazard than anything, the rest of the road's not up to current standards. So as part of that, staff has just proposed for your consideration, change, tweaking the language again to make it so that homes that are on roads that are identified in that sidewalk development policy and project prioritization list would still have to build a sidewalk, say, say if a church, or if a, if a home was built along Church Street somewhere, but those roads like Green Drive, like Fairview, that are kind of off the major roads would no longer have to. So that is the explanation behind why this proposed, certainly for your consideration.
I guess my question on that is, is it possible to parse these out and approve some? Because this one, this is one I'm not necessarily in favor of, because I'd rather have the sidewalks there, knowing that eventually we'll probably need them the whole way, and if we say no now, we're gonna end up with the patchwork that we have currently. I imagine every parcel is going to be developed, so even if they're the first one, we don't want them to be one that doesn't have the sidewalk if everyone else does later. So that's just my thoughts on that matter right off the bat. Councilmember Fender, please, followed by Councilmember Robati.
So would this amendment apply to a new subdivision?
No, a sub, any subdivision's gonna be required to build sidewalks on both sides of the road. This is just if, if, if there was a subdivision from 30 years ago with a vacant lot on a road, and just one house is being proposed, they applied for a building permit, they currently would have to build sidewalks. This amendment would make it so if that road was not one of, one of the ones on the, the prioritization list, they would then not have to build that sidewalk.
But how is that specified in the wording here that this does not apply to a new subdivision? Not that we have any place to build a new one anywhere, but...
So I, let me see here. So, well, I'll describe it somewhat like this, so under A, all-new development, that's the part that requires sidewalks for all-new development, and, and there are other standards in the UDO for subdivisions and other types of development like that. We just added in this one, under C, at the very bottom, just that those specific types of, of uses are exempt from the all-new development portion under A.
I'm wondering if there's a way to make it a little more clear in the verbiage?
It prob, it probably is. And, and again, I'll, let me back up, this, this is one that I think staff was conflicted about bringing back, but because of some of the, the citizen comments on it, thought it was worthy to at least bring it back before council for consideration.
That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Could you elaborate on some of the citizen comments that would have made this, because I don't, I don't actually see the point. I think we need to move in the direction of more sidewalks, not fewer, but I'm, you know, I'm willing to listen to reason.
Yeah, it, well, one, we had a, a public speaker at the last Planning and Zoning Board when this was presented, and I, I can't remember all of it, he said, but it was, it was mostly a demeanor of, none of my neighbors had to do this, you know, it, it's, it's costing extra money on top of my house, I have to go through these extra hurdles. He specifically said it's gonna be more of a tripping hazard than anything else, comments like that.
So this is a person who's building a house in an area where there are other houses, but there's no sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, then I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, Mayor Pretam Johnson.
So Ann got to the, the exact point I was gonna get to, we're talking about some of the older streets and neighborhoods here in Morrisville where sidewalks were never required, where there, there is no sidewalk, where there's actually drainage, ditches, I'm not even sure if that's the right terminology, and to put a sidewalk is, is, is gonna be difficult, number one, and number two, won't connect to anything, so, so, but Ann got there before I did, so I, I, you know, I am a proponent of sidewalks and greenways, always have been, but I do think sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't make sense if you're not gonna have a whole connected network, and if you're just gonna have a piece hanging out there. And we just talked about that with roads, some, some of the roads are widened and not, and you have all these choke points, and not that this is a choke point, but it just, you know, they, they don't make sense sometimes, so, so, so this brings up another question then, I, and I'm gonna make an assumption here, there's no way, you know, we do a lot of this work that we do with development, when we come up to a point like this, there's a payment-in-lieu option. Is that any, is that an option in, in these situations, or is that not applicable here?
So i- if council decides to keep the text as you approved in July, that was gonna be my next question, do you want staff to move in a, we accept payment-in-lieu's, or do we want to build them as each home are built? So a payment-in-lieu is, is an option.
Okay, that, that's good, but then the other piece of that is, and now I'm thinking, let's, let's talk about like Green Drive for a minute, even accepting a payment-in-lieu for one infill, single-family home, when are we gonna construct the rest of it? And how, how viable is that then?
So there's a, there's a few different factors, the first one is that I, I don't think that road is built to the current standards of, that we'd have a road built today. The second one is, we, we have accepted one payment-in-lieu so far, I think it was a little over $400. That's not gonna get us the site, it's gonna take a while to build that up, which is another question the resident asked, where are you gonna spend my money? I'm giving you this check, where are you gonna spend it? You know, then there's other costs with actual construction, you know, certainly if enough houses are built, eventually the sidewalk will be constructed, not sure when that's gonna be. I don't know if that's the best answer, but that's kind of the factors I've seen.
No, no, that's a fair answer, and so then the last part of this puzzle then is, how many situations do you think we're talking about here? Just like a handful, we can count on our two hands?
Yeah.
Because I can't imagine we're talking about a lot here.
You know, the few off of Aviation, Clements Drive, Fairview Green, I'm thinking Holly Creek Road, as it's currently developed, just with, with, with lots that are already subdivided, and maybe a new home being built, I am struggling to think of really any other roads this, this might apply to around town, so.
And, and, and some of those streets you just talked about are where our most affordable housing options are in the town of Morrisville too, so I think that is a, you know, once again, it's one of these where you think, oh boy, that makes a lot of sense. it's one of these where you think, oh, boy, that makes a lot of sense. Let's get as much sidewalk as we can, until you delve into the issue and you start asking the questions and you realize it maybe is not as wise in the end. So, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
So those who had their questions answered, does anyone want to take a second round? Okay. I would just bring up the fact that also redevelopment is coming in all areas of town, and to the point of the orphaned roads. I'd rather have orphaned roads with the pavement there than not have them there at all. And I'm not very much in favor of payment in lieu, because by the time we do do it, it's going to cost more, and the expectation is there that we're going to be paying for it. So I'm in favor at this time. But we have public hearing, and we'd love to hear from our residents about what we want to do with this one. But at this time, I'm thinking that I'd rather have the sidewalks built, just like I'd rather have the roads built. And I'd rather underground our utilities, for example. Everything that we can get done, I'd like us to try to do. Anyone else have any comments before we move on? Councilmember Skargne Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Pretam Johnson was speaking, it kind of made sense to me of the area Green Road. A lot of those homes don't have curb and gutter. They just have the swales for the stormwater to go, and it is really, really difficult to install sidewalks. There was a major project several years ago, maybe five years ago now, where we converted the, the road of Church Street from Morrisville Carpenter down, that also did not have curb and gutter. And it took a lot of grant money and a lot of work to get that converted. So to ask a homeowner to do that work for a very small piece of sidewalk, if the road was brought up to standards, we'd have to rip out that sidewalk in order to install curb and gutter. So the rework really is not going to be, it's not reasonable in this case. So I would be in favor of accepting payment in lieu, knowing that it's not going to cover the full cost. But it's better than installing something that has to be ripped out and then reinstalling it, because eventually I think that area will have curb and gutter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you address the ripped out part, or would it be planned in such a way that it wouldn't?
Well, so that was, that was part of, so I'll backtrack a little bit, but so council approved these text amendments that required each single-family home to have a sidewalk in June or July. We had our first application, and when it came in, staff kind of looked at each other and thought, well, where is he going to build it? Where do we put it exactly? There is a ditch on a road. So we had a few meetings, and out of those meetings, this is what came up, proposed. Because with a, with an older road like that, with a ditch on the side, we could generally tell the person where to build it. It might not be ripped up. It might stay there. It, but there's a lot of just various factors that are going to go into that decision. So depending on what brings the future, it might be ripped up. It might not, maybe not if it's behind the ditch, or probably there's going to be enough room for curb and gutter. But with other utilities, you're not, I can't guarantee that either way. So, yeah.
Councilmember Robati, please.
I don't really think it's fair to penalize a homeowner with a payment in lieu for, for one space on a road that, that if we decide to put a sidewalk on the whole road, I just don't see that it's going to make so much difference that we don't have to put the sidewalk along that 20 feet or whatever. You know, and I mean, honestly, like by the time we go and do it, like, you know, like somebody said, it's not going to cover, it wouldn't cover the cost anyway. But I just don't think it's fair to expect that from a homeowner on, on a lot where no homeowner in the area has incurred the same cost. I think that, I think it's unfair. I just think we should just waive that for the few lots that it's even going to affect.
Okay. So staff has heard a lot, and we have two weeks. They'll be bringing us back. Anything else for updates at this time?
Nothing else for that item. I can just move on to my recommendations, if you'd like. So these were staff-proposed recommendations, so clearly we recommend approval of them for various reasons. The planning and zoning board recommended unanimous approval of the request. And if you haven't had a chance to read those meeting minutes, the one public speaker we had did discuss the sidewalk issue. It's summarized in those meeting minutes. Action items, next meeting, staff is asking for action, please. And that is all I have for tonight.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. So it is open. Town Clerk Smith, were there anyone in person signed up for tonight?
No, sir. There was no one signed up for the public hearing.
I'd like to confirm there's no one sent any emails.
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the room who wanted to speak who didn't sign up? Okay, seeing none. As this is the first time the public has heard us discuss this, I propose we keep the public hearing open to allow input into the record, as we are scheduled to have updates and potential action at our next meeting on September 28. If that's not acceptable to anyone at this time, I'd entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Okay, hearing none. I believe we'll keep it open until our meeting in two weeks. Thank you very much, Mr. Larson. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to indicate that we're leaving it open, town attorney, or we're fine? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We're at item 12, new items. There is one new item on tonight's agenda, a memorandum of understanding with Singh Development Team for the Town Center Core Demonstration Project. Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, will facilitate the item.
Does need to go back to their... The MOU, second from the bottom. That one, there you go. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for some time tonight. As I get started, I want to acknowledge that we have several folks in the audience that are relevant to this discussion. We have Avi Gurul and his team from Singh LLC, and then we also have Eric Thomas from DFI with the school government at UNC. So we have tonight for you, based on your direction at the last conversation we had about the Town Center project and developing an MOU. We do have a draft MOU for your review that would be an MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the town and Singh Development LLC. We'll tell you that this has been created by Singh with guidance from DFI. It has been reviewed by DFI staff, town staff, and also by the town attorney. And so we are in consensus that this is an appropriate document to be able to move forward with the Town Center project. So you have had the MOU in your packet, had a chance to look at that. I certainly don't intend to read it to you. I am happy to, if there are any questions you have, answer that, or if you would prefer, I can certainly run through the highlights if that would be beneficial. Happy to do whichever you prefer.
Looking for any questions? Does anyone want, Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So the only question I have, Brandon, is, it relates to the, the actual timing. Under four and seven, where we talk about the 180 days for execution of the MOU, and then to finalize the development plan, 90 days. Is that, is that typical? Is that enough time? Is that, you know, I'd like to make this happen as soon as possible. So...
Yeah, that, that is a typ-
Is it necessary to have those timeframes?
Yeah, that is a typical timeframe. And what I want you to keep in mind is that's 180 days, you know, essentially from potentially two weeks from now, if you adopt this, where we say go, and there is a lot of work to be done. And then there's also keeping in mind that we need this submitted from Singh. We need time to review it ourselves and with DFI, and then get it to you. And then depending on how you feel about it, if we need to come back again. So it's 180 days, but it's really not 180 days, if that makes sense, because we certainly will be talking with Singh about, you know, ideally completing this probably closer to a four-month, four-and-a-half-month window than a six-month window, to make sure we have review time and time to get it back to you for your approval, before we would then move towards a development services agreement. So keeping in mind that the development, this MOU is really focused first on a development plan, which is still conceptual, but putting more detail and more concepts in, and better defining who's going to do what, who's going to pay for what, how that work is going to be accomplished. And then once we reach that level of agreement, then there would be that 90-day window to go into a development services agreement, which is much more specific, much more about getting ready to start construction, to apply for permits, and that sort of thing. So does that answer your question, ma'am?
It does. And, and, you know, this is important. This is a really significant project for the town of Morrisville, and it needs to be done with very, with great care and great thought. So I understand that. And I just wanted to make sure that that, those are the appropriate times. And, and it does say within, in both instances, I think, I believe the other 90 days, too, it's...
We could certainly be faster.
Yeah. But, but again, it has to be done right.
Correct.
And that's, that obviously is the first priority and more important. But this is an important project. I'll just say it again.
Agreed.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So this is essentially the foundation of how we're going to agree to agree. So I think just for the benefit of the residents watching and the stakeholders, maybe you can go over some of the highlights.
Be happy to.
So they have something to react to.
Be happy to.
And you know what's coming in two weeks.
So just as a reminder, back in November of 2020, we had developed an RFP, Request for Proposals, that was put out publicly. You received, we received three submittals about that from potential development partners. Those came in at the end of February of this year. We then spent a couple of months evaluating those internally with staff and with DFI's help, to be prepared to let them make presentations to you. You subsequently heard first a summary from us on the three proposals, and then you heard from each of the development teams to share with you their vision and how they thought they could achieve. Your vision for Town Center, you then narrowed it initially to two, and then subsequently, after some further discussion and some clarification on vision, you narrowed it to one, Singh. And you asked us to work towards this MOU. So that's what got us here tonight with this document. And again, this document is framed around a standard DFI agreement. So they have shared a framework for Singh to work within, which they did. And then we did a little bit of tweaking here and there. The town attorney's office did a little bit of tweaking to make sure it was an appropriate document for moving forward. So as you look at this document, I'll just give you some very brief highlights from some of the sections. So section one really just establishes guidelines and responsibilities related to the development plan that we discussed, and also the development services agreement. And really, again, keeping in mind, with very few exceptions, there's one item in section seven, one in eight, and one in 14 that are obligatory, that we're committing to doing something. Other than that, none of this is binding. It is just really a way to establish an exclusive negotiation period with Singh as your preferred development partner. So that's, that's the purpose of the document, really. Section two, again, just really restates your original guiding public interest, a vibrant, walkable area that's a destination, increasing residential density, and maximizing private investment while optimizing public investment. And then it also talks about your general goals related to the sale of the land at fair market value, the need for infrastructure to still be built in some cases, building a town green, exploring leasing options of commercial space for governmental purposes. We've had some of those conversations, that that could be a way to help kickstart the Town Center project, and also provide some relief potentially to some of our facility needs. And then financially participate in the development of parking for uses on the site. And we've had plenty of conversations about the critical importance of sufficient parking. And so what you'll see a little later in the document, for example, Councilmember Robati, I know you had some questions, as have others, about is this enough parking? So this says, we'll talk more about that. And we'll make sure that we all agree that there's sufficient parking. It's just one example of many things that would be discussed. So going down, if you look then at, section three really just talks about the site and this two-step process, not a lot of meat there. Section four, the development plan, again, 180 days for the conceptual portion of this, and then really moving to the development services agreement, which is more of the specific design. And here's how we'll actually have it look and that sort of thing. Section five talks about us working with Singh to address specific infrastructure improvements. We've had those conversations since the beginning of this RFP process, that we will likely be contributing to some additional infrastructure, while also recognizing, as Councilmember Garamell and others pointed out, we've done significant work already with the Town Center, SEM, and, and other pieces of the puzzle to be ready for this. Also talks about establishing some preliminary plans for how this is all going to be financed, and what will be the construction of actual infrastructure that's needed. Section six, there's your parking section that talks about, we'll make sure that we are able to serve new and legacy uses, so we'll have sufficient parking to accommodate what we want to do there. Section seven establishes the 90-day window that we've already discussed for the development services agreement. Also has some language in there about potential termination, which we don't anticipate, and also possible extension if warranted. We also don't anticipate it, but again, want to be, have a little foresight and be prepared for that, should it have to happen. Section eight, let me get down to that here. Section eight just really speaks to, if we're going to investigate the property, what's the requirements for Singh? If they go on the site and have to dig a hole, they have to put it back and make it look decent, is just one example. Also talks about some documents. We'll give them some documents upfront that identify what we know about the party. And if heaven forbid, anything was terminated, they have a requirement to return that all to us when that occurs. Also requires them to give us a 48-hour notice before they were to go on the property, in case we want to have a staff member there, or in case we need to make any notifications. Section nine just speaks to mutual cooperation. That has been the core of this from the get-go, and that's been the core of our conversations with Avi and his team, is that, you know, we're in this together. We want to make sure that we're communicating, sharing information, and cooperating. Section 10 speaks very briefly to the requirement for 1% of the price for purchasing construction that would be paid by Singh to DFI. That's been part of our contract with DFI since we started this project. Section 11 just outlines specific steps and responsibilities for that development services agreement, gives you a little more definition of what that's going to ultimately include. Section 12 just says that neither one of us can give this agreement to somebody else to handle, and certainly nobody's intention. 13 speaks to some general guidelines. There is property to be transferred from us to Singh, and some guidelines around how that will happen. Number 14 is, again, cooperation and information exchange. It speaks to the fact that there will be at least a monthly meeting on this. Quite honestly, we expect minimally bi-weekly, if not weekly, depending on how we're progressing to keep this moving. Nobody, us or Singh, wants to let this sit. We want, we want to be moving on this. So we are, we are ready to go in that regard. Section 15 just clarifies that if they spend money during this process, it's on them. If we spend money during this process, it's on us. No, no financial exchange will occur until we get into that development services agreement. And then section 17 just talks about the fact that we will coordinate on any publicity around this. Neither one of us will do anything without sharing it with the other and making sure that we have a consistent message. We acknowledge that an important component of this is involving the community, educating the community, sharing with them what we're doing and why we're doing, and what they'll see come out of it, whether that be this mixed-use development, you know, some additional residential, particularly the town green, those things that, again, we heard from you, that, you know, you think it's really important that this be a destination, this be something that people can use and go to. And again, I think that's part of why you ultimately selected Singh, was their vision met those needs ultimately. And then section 18 through 23, I won't even pretend to speak to. If you have any questions about that, we have a town attorney that can address what I refer to as the legal ease of the document. That is the highlights. Happy to take any questions.
That is excellent. So I was thinking, getting everyone educated and engaged, I'd love that little presentation that you just gave to be on the website, on the Town Center website, with a copy of the eventually agreed to agreement. I think that would be a nice way to get it going. But I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Brandon, could you explain section 12, assignability? The parties agree that the DSA will be between the town and a single purpose development entity that will include the principles of the proposers Singh Development. The DSA may not be assigned by either party, et cetera, et cetera. Developer may assign to an affiliate entity or entities comprised wholly of the developer principal's family members for succession purposes?
So if there was a change, the way I understand this, and I'll let Frank speak to it, or perhaps Eric, but if, if something were to change with Singh, they could pass this essentially to successors in the family if it became a different corporation, but was essentially still the same group or some component of their family doing that work. They can't just sell it to another organization or another development firm, but they could pass it in the sense of if there was succession of family in their group. Eric, is that a...
I have any of the fair assumption for that.
Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Or can I try to better describe that?
It makes sense as you're describing it, but is that, is that usual language in a contract of this type? I've never heard that before.
It's to protect the assignment from SING to another development group. It's primarily the direction for that.
Okay.
I don't think we anticipate that being an issue, but, but it's language that we were comfortable allowing in there.
Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
So, I don't really have another question. I just have a comment about the, the site plan that is in here, and the visuals that you all put in here. I really want to thank you, and I want to thank our staff. I want to thank SING Development and our staff for that. That was very important, I thought, to make sure that that was all included. You know, we, we as a council have been talking about, well, I've been talking about this project for a long time, but we as a council have been talking about this project for a long time.
Last one.
And, and the public has not been privy to all our conversations and the vision that we've talked about. So, to include all this, and especially the visuals, which may not be exactly what we'll have on the ground here in Morrisville, but, you know, really do exemplify the, the vision that we're going after. I, I thought that was very important for the public, because this is very exciting, and I know you all feel that way, too. This is very exciting, and I want the public to be as excited as we all are. So, so thank you for including all that. And, and I hope that, I know there are some folks that are watching tonight, and if they're not watching tonight, they, they were going to watch the video for this very conversation. And I encourage them to look through everything that's in this package, because I, I hope, I hope, and I think you will be as excited as we all are. So, thank you for doing that.
And so, I would say that, you know, you can see there on your screens, the, the vision that's been described. There, there are additional, as you said, Mayor Protam imageries and renderings through this presentation, that are all available on the town's website as a part of this agenda packet. And then, again, once we get past September 28th, and should you choose to adopt this MOU or approve this MOU, we'll certainly get information out on the website highlighting all of this. We're already working on a, a public briefing. We know we've had some interest from TBJ and some other industry folks that'll help share the word of, of the good work and the good news in Morrisville. I do want to give Avi just a couple of minutes to offer any comments or, or answer any questions you may have of him.
Thanks, Brandon. No, I just wanted to say thanks to you all. You know, it's been, so far in the last few months with Brandon and Eric, and you all on council, and Mr. Mayor, you know, it's been a collaborative effort to get to this point. And so, you know, we're, our wheels are already spinning, and once we get through all the legalese, as, as Brandon put it, we're, we're ready to just get, get on it. So, yeah, if you guys have any specific questions, we're here to answer.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Oh, can I just, I was still on my, I hadn't put my thing down. Can I just follow up? Thank you for mentioning Eric. Eric, I include you in staff when I talk about staff. You've been on this project a long time, too. So, thank you for your efforts as well. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rao?
I think Mayor Protam alluded to it already, but I think it is so important for the public to, you know, view these discussions, you know, get appraised of, you know, the infrastructure investments in our community, the other potential amenities. And, you know, I just want to thank you all for putting this forward. I think, moving forward, my question would be, I guess, to Brandon, Deputy Manager Zutima, will the process be that we continue after we execute this MOU, you'll continue work sessions, we're getting briefings? And, you know, Avi, if somebody, let's say, reads something in the Business Journal, and they come and say, "Look, I want to do a incubator here," how do I get in touch? What's that process like? You know, do we, do we toss that to the staff, and then you handle that? Because I'm already getting some inquiries, and this hasn't even...
Yeah. So, if you receive any inquiries, or any offers, or any expression of interest, please refer those to staff. We'll share those with Avi and his team, because at this point, they'll be doing the primary work in attempting to recruit potential occupants for Town Center, whether that would be retail or, or other types of business. Again, you heard from them, they've got some, I think, some exciting options available that we'll be prepared to discuss publicly, perhaps at a future meeting. But, yeah, if you get any of that, please let us know, and we'll push that straight to SING so they can work with that. You know, as far as what, how often we come back, I would envision that the first couple of months, probably you won't hear a lot back from us, other than an occasional update, because we have a lot of work to do. They have a lot of work to do. We'll get going as a team, working with DFI, and with SING, and with town staff, to, you know, work towards where we think we have something to bring you. But, I do expect that to take us a couple of months to get going on, and to get a framework established before we would come back to you, when we have something for you to react to. Again, we can certainly give you updates along the way, but I think it's important that we bring you something meaningful to say yea or nay, not just every little piece of the puzzle. It'll, it'll, doesn't facilitate it very well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Skrogas Johnson, please.
Thank you. Could we go to the slide that shows the whole, the white one, maybe? This one? Yes. I would like to say, thank you for tweaking the concept, based on our feedback and requests. One of the things that I am really excited about is the open space. We, like the town green, and I have said tirelessly that, as we look at the Town Center, we need to give the current residents something to celebrate, something to look forward to, something to gather. And I think that we are making that happen. That has become on the top priority. So, everything else is a little bit interesting, like the public art is something that we had wanted to do, but I, I didn't see that before, and I think that's new, and it's exciting, and it, it'll give Morrisville a more unique feel, which is what we want. We want people to know they're in Morrisville when they're in our downtown. So, looking forward to seeing more information about that. And just to make this a vibrant center of activity is a goal that I think we all share. And I think this concept does achieve that. So, I'm looking forward to seeing more information and refinement on the concept, but I think this has really been a, a good experience for me, and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yep. Likewise. And, and like we mentioned in our initial discussions, I think a lot of credit goes to you all, and, and, you know, current leaders, former leaders of the town, because, you know, it's rare that you have a situation like this, where you already have a built-in vibrancy with the, the Greenways coming through there, with the library, with the public services already there, you know, the farmer's market. So, you know, we're excited to just build off of that.
As you mentioned, it's about the momentum, and the excitement is building. So, we're just glad to be part of it. We're glad to recognize you guys as being a part of it as well. Anything else, Avi or Brandon?
No, sir. I encourage you to take a look at this over the next few days. If you have any questions, let us know. If not, we anticipate bringing this back to you to do a resolution to approve the agreement with, the MOU with SING at the 28th meeting.
Okay. Wonderful. We'll see you all in two weeks. Thank you so much. A lot of hard work got us to this point.
Thank you.
Now, we are... All set, Assistant Managers? Should I move on, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And 13, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. We've got a lot going on. This Friday, September 17th, Movies in the Park is Zootopia, from 8 till 10 p.m. at Morrisville Community Park. That's at 1520 Morrisville Parkway. Bring your blankets or lawn chairs for a nice, family-friendly time. On Tuesday, October 5th, we will be celebrating National Night Out in person in neighborhoods throughout Morrisville. Registration is still open until noon on this Friday, September 17th. So, please have a representative register your neighborhood to be part of what helps us all live connected and live well. This Friday also marks the end of the application period for Teen Morrisville 101. This is a great way to learn more about the inner workings of the many departments which serve you and our business community. The town is one of the sponsors of the East Meets West Festival, and on Thursday, September 30th, the 10-day event kicks off with a food and performances at the Wake Competition Center, located at 121 Wake Competition Drive, just off Morrisville McCrimmon Parkway. Friday, October 1st, is our next Music at the Hub, the Healthy Food Hub. This edition will be Indian music at 280 Town Hall Drive from 6 till 8 p.m. And the following day, Saturday, October 2nd, our Smart Shuttle service begins, which we're all very excited about. Later that Saturday, from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m., our Fire Safety Day takes place in the Target Parking Lot in Parkwest Village 3001 Market Center Drive. Join us for food, fun, games, door prizes, apparatus display, and fun for the whole family. And all these things are always online, www.townofmorrisville.org. At this time, we're at Council and Manager Comments. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao to get us started.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Morrisville Cardinals. They weren't here this week, weekend, but it's just been amazing to see the momentum. And I want to thank the owners and all of the volunteers for bringing this together. Looking forward to a great future in Morrisville. Want to thank Chief Criddle and the Fire Department for a great 9/11 open house, and it was really great to get different perspectives. And finally, I want to, perspectives from our firefighters of different ages, those who are older, and those that were born before, after 9/11. And I just want to, a final thing before I want to make some comments about National Business Week, Small Business Week. There's an event on Saturday by a youth group at Bon Park on Meals on Wheels, and I'll put information out there, but I just really am impressed with the youth and how engaged they are, both in our teen programs, our youth programs in Morrisville. So, very proud to see these kids flourish and thrive. The last thing I want to say is that it's National Business Week, and I want to thank, you know, any entrepreneur who's had the courage to start, start a small business. Over the last few years, we've had success in seeing a lot of businesses come to Morrisville, many in the tech and pharma, life sciences. We have a lot of innovation here, and, you know, I think when we have a Town Center, one thing I'm excited about is having more destinations where businesses can gather and interact. And I look forward to working with our recovery programs to, to, to help, now that we have a fiscal officer on board, to help our businesses not only survive, but thrive. There are two events, I want to let the public know, that are watching tonight. If you're a veteran business, and you need some help learning about procurements and contracts, I'm a board member at NC Vet Biz, but there's an event September 16th at 2 o'clock. If you go to ncvetbiz.org, it's a virtual event. Go, go into town, you'll learn a lot. And the Startup Summit, we're hosting at Frontier on September 22nd, where we're going to have a lot of in-person masks and social distancing. We're going to talk about startups, and companies, and what we can do to, to grow in the region. So, thank you for a great meeting tonight, and happy Small Business Week, and just get out there and support our small businesses. They're having a tough time still, and we should do our part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamallo, please.
So, first, I want to say thank you and congratulations to the Fire Department. They are going through their re-accreditation process. They're two-thirds of the way through today, kicked off yesterday. And I didn't, I'm probably going to remember the numbers wrong, but, and Chief, you can shake your head up or down, or sideways, or whatever for me. But, in this nation, there are only about 250 departments that are accredited, as the town of Morrisville is, our fire department is. And of those that are accredited fire departments, which is the best of the best of the best, of those 250, there are only about 11 that are of the same size we are. So, I think that goes to, to, to show the tremendous work that our fire department, the men and women of our fire department do day in and day out for us. And, of course, this accreditation means they are, again, the best of the best, but they're, they're practicing the best practices of the fire department, and, and that translates to better service for each and every one of us that live here, work here, play here. So, congratulations to you all, because I know it'll be successful. I have no doubt. I have great confidence. I think I, I told them yesterday at the, at the kickoff. Also, want to welcome Trader Joe's one more time to the town of Morrisville. I've been there three days in a row. I'm not going anymore for a while. So, they, they had a wonderful opening on Friday. It was only on Friday, and I've been there three days in a row. One of the things that we did tonight on the consent agenda was to amend the employment agreement with the town manager, and just want to say happy anniversary to our town manager, Martha Page. She'll be with us eight years on September 23rd. So, as some of us, well, I said, "We're going to celebrate all month, Martha," because it, it was a great hire, still a great hire. You, you do a tremendous job here. So, thank you for spending your eight years with us, and congratulations on the amendment to the contract, and on, on, on putting up with the council, with all of us. So, appreciate that very much. And then, the last thing I'm going to say, the, this coming Saturday is World Cleanup Day, and council is a part of the stewardship program that we hear, we have here in town, where groups are members of the stewardship program, and go out and do projects across town. A lot of them are litter sweeps, and council will be out there this Saturday, at least some of us. I've not heard from everyone. I've only heard from four. So, if you are going to be with us on Saturday, please let me know, so I can let staff know, and they'll be prepared for everything we're going to do on World Cleanup Day. And I urge everyone to go out and participate where you are, and how you can, this Saturday for World Cleanup Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamallo, followed by Councilmember Skrogas Johnson, please.
I think I echo what Les said to Martha. Thank you for, you know, bearing us, and you never came, and said, "I quit," or anything, but, you know, you have been really nurturing each one of us, and trying to get through difficult situations. Thank you for all that you do. And, one more thing, I, you know, it's a great pride. Parkside Elementary started three years ago, and the principal invited me, because she got selected as one of the five panelists for the Principal of the Year. So, today, you know, we had, she included me in a panel with other teachers and principals, an hour and a half interview, that we had to talk about, you know, how good Parkwest is, and how the, how the community came together, and from the teacher perspective, and the career perspective. So, it was a very good interview process. She, you know, she has two more rounds to go, but it's proud that our Morrisville town is one of the finalists. And they will come to know, you know, in a month's time, who would be the Principal of the Year.
Thank you for taking the time to support her. That's really important. Were you done?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Skrogas Johnson, followed by myself.
Well, the problem with going almost last is that all the great things have been shared. But, I would like to say thank you, Martha, for your service to the town of Morrisville, and for your patience with all of us. It certainly is a different town than it was eight years ago. And it's, we've grown in population and service level, and we have a AAA bond, you know, AAA rating with all of our financial, I mean, just, it's really exciting to be here today, just kind of looking back at where we were. So, thank you. And I would like to say that this past several weeks with the new cricket team, the Morrisville Cardinals, was really super fun. I've been looking for something that really says Morrisville, and I was hoping for a middle or high school to be completely transparent, but to have our home team, and to see Morrisville being said again and again, because it's part of the team name, and they have team shirts, and there's games. It just was really nice to see and celebrate our community, and see so many visitors. We had Wake County Commissioners, we had members of Wake County School Board come out. It's really exciting, and I think that I'm looking forward to next season already, but it really is a good thing. I'd like to see more of that from other areas of our town. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Congresswoman Ross.
That's true.
Came by as well, which is pretty cool.
Yes.
Isn't it?
And she studied on how to properly do the coin toss, so that's kind of fun.
So, I agree with my colleagues that it has been a really good eight years. It's been transformative and exciting. I would like to thank Chief Criddle and the Fire Rescue Department, and the supporting staff for providing our community the opportunity to gather in remembrance of those lost 20 years ago on 9/11. The stories and memories shared stirred up deeper emotions for all of us. Thank you to CERT for helping with the food preparation. Thank you to the Junior Hurricanes over at Wake Competition Center for hosting police and fire at their games that evening, to recognize their service to the community. A belated Happy Grandparents' Day to those grandparents out there. This was that past Sunday. And on Sunday also, I enjoyed, as much as I can enjoy running 5K the following morning in support of www-headforthe cure.org, thanks to We strive... Thanks to Weef Strive, Suresh Falanki, Balaj Karthik, Venu Vegasana, and Raj Pachetti for organizing to bring awareness to brain cancer research. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting their first in-person safe and socially-distanced coffee and connections this morning. Made some good connections. That's what it's all about here in Morrisville. Congratulations to Jasgaran Malhotra, who was called up from our own Morrisville Cardinals to represent the United States on our national team. And last week, in an astounding performance, he was the fourth person ever to hit six sixes, you can think of those as home runs, in a row in international play. So that's really truly incredible in and of itself. So congratulations to him and the Cardinals, hoping that they're going to be making the playoffs and playing later this month here in Morrisville. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Fender.
So I agree with everything that's been said, especially about Martha. I did want to add my personal thanks to Chief Krittl and the firefighters for what I felt was a very meaningful and appropriately solemn remembrance of September 11th. I, you know, hearing the stories of other people and having an opportunity to tell my stories to the firefighters that were there was very meaningful to me, so thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Sure, I'll keep mine short since I'm last. Thank you, Martha, for being the best Town Manager ever. You're my most favorite Town Manager that I've ever had. And lastly, I wanted to thank Chief Krittl as well and your team for the open house hosting us, the guys that were out there around the fire truck, giving talks and letting the little kids get up in the cab, letting me get up in the cab. They were really great in, you know, interfacing and connecting with the community. And I also appreciate the presentation that you gave as well. It was very meaningful, and, you know, I appreciate having a place to go on the 20th anniversary to remember that day. So I thought it was a good event, so thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Town Manager Page, are there any comments from staff at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to our final item. We have two closed sessions this evening to discuss a matter of attorney-client privilege and a personnel matter. We do not plan to conduct any public business after the closed sessions this evening, so at this time, thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council or attending in person. We hope you plan to join us again. Please feel free to email your Town Council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. At this time, I would ask for a motion to enter into our closed session.
Mayor and council, I'll move us into closed session. There's going to be another item added. I spoke to Councilor Gray, but I'm going to go ahead and move us in. Pursuant to North Carolina Statute 143.318 to 11A3, we're going in a closed session to discuss a matter of attorney-client privilege. Pursuant to the same statute, A4, we're going to be talking about economic development matter. And pursuant to North Carolina Statute 143.318 to 11A6, we will be discussing a personnel matter, i.e. Town Manager goals. So A3, A4, and A6.
I'll second.
And Mayor, if I may just elaborate a little bit, it's not a new item, it's just the first item.
Yeah, sorry.
15A has both components to it. Attorney-client and economic development. Rolled into one.
Okay. Do we need to amend the motion, or are we fine?
No, no, I just wanted to...
I can redo the motion if you want.
Okay. Excellent. I have a motion on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. We are now in closed session. It is 7:35. Thank you again for visiting Town Council. And if we could clear the room.
I have a break.